Good evening, everyone. It's October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the October Board of Directors for the School District of Council Rock, the October meeting. I will turn it directly to Dr. Sanco.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Would you please join Alexis Marcus and Eric Jaffe? Alexis and Eric, would you go to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, go right ahead, rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alexis. Thank you, Eric. And Mr. Burns. Have a good night.
All right, Madam Secretary, give her a roll call, please.
Edward Tate.
We'll be running a couple of minutes late.
Michael Thornward.
Present.
Mary McKeever.
Here.
Joseph Haldago.
Present.
Ed Solomon.
Here.
Mike Roosevelt.
Here.
Bob Pickie.
Here.
Yoda Pally.
Here.
And Steven Nomus.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. From there, we'll go to Mr. T. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Doing well. How about yourself?
Wonderful evening.
Great. Well, thank you all for having us this evening. So good evening, School Board of Directors, administrators. Dr. Sanco, it is my pleasure again this evening to welcome this year's Student Advisory Board for Council Rock High School North. In front of you this evening are five students. Each student represents a particular grade level as well as MBIT. And later this year, we will have a student speaking on behalf of the Star Center. This evening, we have twelfth grade Tim Gracie, eleventh grade Lele Nagel, tenth grade Olivia Esposito, ninth grade Lillian Albuker, and for MBIT, Polina Nikolenko. At this time, I would like to pass the microphone over to our twelfth grade representative, Tim Gracie.
Hello again, board. I'm excited to be with you all again for my final year of student advising, now being the senior class advisory representative of the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Four. As you all know, I'm here to share with you all the recent happenings of the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Four and what to expect. In addition, I'll be providing some insight into North's academics and any recent academic achievements of our talented students and staff here at Council Rock North. To start, I'll share a bit about the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Four. We are so excited to finally have a Disney countdown of our own, having just one hundred and seventy-three days until the commencement of our senior trip. Our class has recently just dropped our initial payments for our rooming and hospitality for the senior class trip. Additionally, we have been raising funds for our senior prom through an amalgamation of different methods, one of which through the upcoming Fall Festival, in which much of the profits made at the senior class stand are going to directly this cause. More on this, this festival is open to the entire community and welcomes everyone. This festival is one in which clubs and outside vendors will be selling food and providing activities. Additionally, we will be having our first of hopefully many antique car shows. On the topic of good news and an optimistic future, the senior class has finally gotten a Blue and White Night win under our belts over the juniors. Although it may have been a surprise to many, we defied all odds and had a great time at our last Blue and White Night. Now for the academic components, I would like to start by congratulating the eighteen commended National Merit Students and the eleven semifinalists. In addition, I'm proud to also announce that Council Rock High School North was recognized as a Silver Member of the AP Honor Roll. This recognizes schools whose AP programs are delivering impressive results for students while broadening access. Additionally, nearly four hundred students participated in the PSATs this past weekend. Last but certainly not least, Council Rock North has been recognized by U.S. News and World Report as one of the best and highest-ranked high schools in the entire nation. That's all from me tonight. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to seeing you all again in December.
Good evening, board. My name is Lele Nagel, and I am happy to be back again this school year, presenting what the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Five has been up to as well as student activities at Council Rock North. The Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Five jumpstarted this year by organizing and setting up the homecoming dance this year. In total, over one thousand three hundred students came in attendance and all had a blast. Coming up, we plan to have a table set up during the Fall Festival as well as a running trunk during trunk retreat. As far as clubs, in September, everything started to become up and running. FBLA was recognized as the summer starter elite club, only seventy-six chapters qualified, and will be recognized in Hershey, Pennsylvania. As for speech and debate, they are still ranked top fifty in the country out of thousands of schools slash programs, and they have already competed at a variety of competitive invites where numerous competitors have placed and over eighty active members who are competing on a regular basis. On the topic of music, Salk and Buskin is putting on their first show of the year titled "The Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee" on November sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. Lastly, our marching band has been competing in competitions and will be performing their show entitled "One Oh Two Point Three WCRN: The Rock." In conclusion, the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Five and the clubs at North have had a good first two months of the school year and will continue to pick up from here.
Good evening, School Board members. I'm Olivia Esposito, the sophomore class Student Advisory Board Representative. I'm happy to announce that it has been another great start to the school year at Council Rock North. The Class of Twenty-Six has been working for a new theme for the library crossover display case. Officers have put up posters for SEB, classes of twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and are hoping to get the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven poster up there soon. Blue and White Night was a great success for the sophomore class, beating the freshmen nine to two. Moving on to athletics, all fall sports will be officially ending their seasons in the next couple of weeks. Girls volleyball is currently ranked nineteen of fifty-three. The team has fourteen wins and six losses. Their last game of the season was Tuesday, but they are looking forward to the upcoming playoffs. Cheerleading, both JV and varsity, had an awesome fall season. They worked hard to prepare sideline cheers at the football games while also learning routines for competition season. The girls are also excited to compete locally and at the state level starting next month. The girls soccer team has a record of eleven wins, five losses, and two ties. They ended their season yesterday with a win against Pensbury and are ranked nineteen out of forty-nine for their season. Boys soccer is ranked twelve of forty-nine. They have thirteen wins, two losses, and two ties. They also had their final game of the season last night. Both girls and boys soccer teams are in good standings while heading into playoffs. Field hockey finished their season this past Tuesday. Their record is ten wins, eight losses, and they are ranked twenty-three of thirty-nine. The team is anxiously waiting to find out if they will qualify for the District One Tournament. The football team is ranked twenty-four of thirty-three. They have two wins and six losses. There is one more game before their much anticipated matchup against Council Rock South, which will be the closing night for this two thousand and twenty-three football season. Golf had a successful year and finished with a record of thirteen-three. Three golfers, Chase Gilli, Mariana Walker, and Nas Meta, qualifying for the district tournament. Tennis finished their year nine and four, with Avery Gosling and Zini Wong placing fourth in doubles. Overall, for the second year in a row, North was recognized as one of the PIAA District One Award winners. Also, North was awarded the Ray Coleman Sportsmanship Award, which is given to one of the twenty-four schools in the Suburban One League. That is all I have to report tonight, but I look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lillian Albuker. I am the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven Representative for the Student Advisory Board, and I will be discussing the freshman transition from middle school to high school, as well as the Student Executive Board and the things that it has done so far this year. The freshman class participated in Welcome Day on their first day of school, September fifth. They received tours from Rock ambassadors, learned how to navigate their schedules, and had questions answered before the other students began school. The freshman student government election, held on September twenty-second, made Owen Crown president, Daniel Cunio vice president, Lucy Rupp secretary, Mia Luna treasurer, and Ava Massimini public relations. The freshman class was able to attend freshman feud hosted by the Rock ambassadors to learn about Blue and White Night and have the opportunity to sign up to participate in games. The Student Executive Board has organized many exciting events this year and will be hosting more in the coming weeks. SEB hosted an Activities Fair on September twenty-first and twenty-second, where the students were able to find out about and join any of the various clubs offered at North. Blue and White Night was held on October fourth, and the profits made went to the district charity, Autism Cares. Finally, SEB will be hosting a trunk or treat on October twenty-fifth. This fun event will give students within the district a safe place to trick or treat, as well as double as a food drive for the Wrightstown Food Pantry. Additionally, the ninth grade class will be collecting any leftover Halloween candy from this event as a donation for their project Treats for Troops. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Polina Nikolenko. I'm a junior at Council Rock North High School, and I level two hundred students in the Medical and Health Professions Program at Middle Box Institute of Technology. What is currently happening? Students at MBIT are very excited to be back. It didn't take long before we were able to start working on our hands-on skills in the lab areas. The students in our Networking and Operating System Security Program are already earning their first COMTIA certifications. MBIT's dual enrollment program Introduction to Business with Bucks County Community College is underway for the fall season. Each student earned three college degrees, starting their college education while in high school. The adult evening program has begun. The fall semester offers courses in welding, electrical, plumbing, and pendant automotive technician certification classes. Datal classes provide instruction on current technologies, opportunities for a new career, update skills, or earn industry certifications. For MBIT, October is a month packed with significance across various fields, highlighting the importance of different aspects of our lives. It's Dental Hygiene Month, reminding us to prioritize oral health. Simultaneously, it's Construction Month, recognizing the dedicated efforts of construction professionals who shape our urban landscapes. October also acknowledges the critical role of Physical Therapy Month, emphasizing the significance of rehabilitation and therapeutic care in restoring and maintaining physical well-being. Additionally, National First Responders Day falls in October, honoring the brave men and women who courteously rush to the scenes of emergencies, ensuring our safety and well-being during times of crisis. Our cosmetologist salon extreme is now has been open since October fifth. Our students have been working tirelessly to master the latest beauty techniques, and now they're ready to showcase their skills to the world. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening at Middle Box Institute of Technology.
Again, thank you for having us this evening. We look forward to seeing you in December.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys. Good seeing you all. Superintendent, report. Good evening again, Dr. Sanco.
Good evening, Mr. Solomon. Thank you, Mr. Solomon, School Board members, members of the community here tonight, and those tuning in on the Council Rock YouTube channel. Thank you, Mr. Truskevich and the Council Rock North Student Advisory, for their detailed report, and thank you also to Mr. Burns and the Council Rock South Band for starting tonight's meeting with their impressive performance. Fall has arrived with an energy you can see and feel in each of our buildings. Students are hard at work making academic and social strides. Many special events are planned at our schools in the coming weeks for the enjoyment of our students, families, and community. And just to show how quickly the school year is moving, in fourteen school days, the first marking period will come to a close. As we have since the start of the school year, the Council Rock administrative team continues to visit buildings and classes throughout the district. Beyond watching the teaching and learning taking place, our team's priority is to maintain an active presence in all of our schools. Students benefit from these visits when they see the adults around them demonstrate a genuine interest in their success. Teachers and staff benefit when their administrative colleagues provide support and feedback. Our visits provide insight on everything from school-wide assemblies to support for an individual student. We strongly believe our present is a power, a powerful way to demonstrate our commitment to keeping students first always. Throughout the year, we pause to recognize scholastic accomplishments of our Council Rock students. Tonight, we will introduce academic scholars from Council Rock High School North who've earned the distinction of being recognized by the National Merit Scholar Program. By way of background, the National Merit Scholar Program acknowledges academically talented students by providing scholarships that shine a spotlight on exceptional performance and encourage the pursuit of academic excellence at all levels of education. Mr. Truskevich would like to introduce each of the Council Rock North National Merit Scholar semifinalists and commended students to you and the community tonight. Mr. Solomon, would you kindly join me and Mr. Truskevich at the podium to congratulate our scholars from Council Rock North?
Again, it's my great pleasure to present to you our National Merit Scholars this evening. Each year, approximately one point three million students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program. Students who took the two thousand and twenty-two PSAT National Merit Scholarships Qualifying Test are eligible for this nationwide competition of recognition and award. The students being recognized this evening have been identified as members of the highest fifty thousand scores. Those being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success, represent a valuable natural resource, and play a key role in the school's academic development. I present to you Council Rock High School North's commended students in alphabetical order. We do have a fair number of them out this evening, either at athletic events or pre-scheduled events, but I'm going to name all of them in alphabetical order. Edward Axelrod. Jaden Bang. Yeah, when they come through. Elise Bloom. Joshua Chang. Anna Cheng. Anish Heda. Alyssa Hused. Hannah Knapp. Chiwan Lim. Ethan Lo. Joshua Myers. Nicole Muradoff. Kriti Ramnath. Myers Rao. Jimmy Sun. Lillian Tetrow. Alexander Walker. And August Young. And then the following students have been recognized as National Merit semifinalists. The scores of these individuals fell in the top sixteen thousand of all test takers and represent the top one percent of all students who took the exam. The semifinalists are Saketh Anthaju. Audrey Chan. Angelina Doris. Michael Devorkin. Michael Fan. Sonika Jane. Kelly Law. Brady Ott. Arnath Rajesh. Shane Wattenmaker. And Kevin Yuan.
Tonight, we will be seeking board approval to add two new members to the Council Rock administrative team. Both of these recommended candidates are veteran educators with years of experience, and we believe they will be a great asset to the school teams that they will be joining. First, to the board, we are recommending Jessica Basta to replace Mr. Tim Ketti as the Assistant Principal of Holland Middle School. Jessica is currently a teacher at Council Rock High School South. Jessica brings to Holland Middle School her years of experience as a classroom teacher and active faculty member at Council Rock South. Jess holds degrees from Wesleyan University in Connecticut, Saint Joseph's University, and her administrative certification from Delaware Valley University. Jessica is here tonight with her husband Luke and her children, Jonah, Theo, and Heidi. Welcome, Jess Basta. We are also, you can clap, that's good. Jess just has to wait on the board to take action and see what happens, right? We are also recommending Joe Spiro to replace Vanessa Robtinson as the Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Council Rock High School North. Joe comes to Council Rock from the New Foundation's Charter School, where he served as a school administrator for the past twenty years. Prior to that, Joe gained experience as a classroom teacher at both the elementary and secondary levels. Joe also holds the distinction of having served in the United States Peace Corps, teaching in the nation of Nepal. He holds degrees from Townsend University, Mary Grove College, and Holy Family University. He also holds certifications in athletic administration from the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. We welcome Joe here tonight with his fiancee, Laura DeSilvia. Congratulations to Newtown Middle School community for their successful Camping for Hunger event that was held last week. Over one hundred fifty Newtown Middle School students participated in this volunteer activity, and one hundred twenty-five campers spent the night in tents on school grounds. This annual event that raises awareness about food insecurity and directly benefits area food cupboards. Thanks to the generosity of our community, this year's event at Newtown Middle School netted three thousand two hundred seventy-four pounds of food. Congratulations again, and thank you to Newtown Middle School and their students on another successful camping event. We are proud to announce that the Council Rock Visual Arts Department once again has been named an Outstanding Community for Visual Arts by the Pennsylvania Art Education Association. This recognition acknowledges the rigorous, inclusive, highly accessible, and highly visible instructional program being delivered to students in our visual arts programs. Congratulations to all students and educators in our visual arts department for their hard work in earning this distinction. This week is National Safe Schools Week, and without breaching our safety measures, we're sharing some of what Council Rock does to maintain student safety. These three items all fall under the umbrella of school safety, are an important and are important for our community to know. Per Pennsylvania law, school districts across the Commonwealth are mandated to perform emergency drills every school year. In Council Rock, we have been conducting emergency drills in conjunction with local law enforcement, first responders from Newtown Borough, Upper Makefield, Northampton Township, and Newtown Township, and would like to publicly thank them. By mid-November, all schools in the district will have completed their drills. On Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, Council Rock is hosting the Bucks County District Attorney's Office for a social media education program at Newtown Middle School. This program educates and offers guidance on identifying malicious content and false information in helping you and your child stay safe when interacting on social media. This event is free, it's open to the public, and again, it is scheduled for Wednesday, November twenty-ninth at six P.M. at Newtown Middle School. Information about this event is on our website and is included in our weekly newsletter. From time to time, it is important to explain to the community how Council Rock responds to incidents of criminal nature involving students. Any allegation of a criminal act reported in our buildings is immediately reported to the local police and all appropriate authorities as soon as the district becomes aware. As mandated reporters, Council Rock is obligated to protect the safety and privacy of all students. We notify child protective agencies such as Childline when any child is reported to have been victimized. Council Rock also conducts an internal, non-criminal investigation to secure the safety, the interest, and the rights of the alleged victim. Understand that the district is prohibited from commenting on police investigations as a matter of law. Likewise, federal law prohibits us from sharing any student-related information as a matter of privacy under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. If you know or suspect of a criminal act against any child or adult, contact your local police department immediately. Suspected child abuse can be reported directly to Childline at one eight hundred nine three two zero three one three. Once again, one eight hundred nine three two zero three one three. This week, our very own Star Center in Richborough was recognized with the Outstanding Project Award by Learning Design Magazine as part of its Fall Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Architectural and Interior Design Awards of Excellence. The facility in Richborough was identified- The facility in Richborough was identified as a benchmark facility for its incorporation of next-generation learning space design and planning, and as a safe and inclusive learning environment for students with special needs. More information on this award and the accompanying article will be posted on our website, and in the back of the room tonight, we have on display for you the plaque that will be displayed at the Star Center. Last weekend, we completed our website conversion. Thank you for your patience. If you log on to the Council Rock webpage, you will notice our site is refreshed and updated. As with any new website conversion, there are no doubt broken or missing links or information that needs updating. Our I.T. department is working as quickly as they can to fix any broken links or to correct any errors. We respectfully ask for your continued patience as we tweak the website to correct the outstanding issues, and again, your patience is greatly appreciated during this process. Our final Property Tax and Rental Rebate Information Session was held on October eleventh, but there's still time to learn more about the program. As a reminder, you must have qualified for the Pennsylvania Property Tax and Rental Rebate before you can submit a rebate application to Council Rock. The deadline for filing the Council Rock rebate is December thirtieth, 2023. If you have any questions, please contact our business office at two one five nine four four one zero four four. Once again, two one five nine four four one zero four four. Some important upcoming dates: Thursday, October twenty-sixth is the Education Committee meeting, which will be held at the Chancellor Center at seven P.M. Tuesday, November seventh is Election Day. All schools are closed, offices are open. Wednesday, November eighth is the end of the first marking period. Thursday, November ninth, Finance and Facilities Meeting will take place in this building at seven P.M. Thursday, November sixteenth is the Board of School Directors Meeting in this room at seven P.M. Friday, November seventeenth, Report Cards will be available in the Home Access Center. Monday, November twentieth, Early Dismissal for Students in Grades K to eight, P.M. Kindergarten attends, and parent-teacher conferences will begin. Tuesday, November twenty-first, once again, it's an early dismissal for students in grades K to eight, parent-teacher conferences will continue, and P.M. kindergarten will attend. Tuesday, November twenty-first, I'm sorry, Wednesday, November twenty-second, No School for Students, and parent- and teacher conferences will take place that day. Thursday, November twenty-third, and Friday, November twenty-fourth, all schools and offices will be closed in recognition of the Thanksgiving holiday break. Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, the District Attorney's Office will be at Newtown Middle School at six P.M. for the Social Media Education Presentation. And Thursday, November thirtieth, the Education Committee will meet in this building at seven P.M. Thank you, and this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sanco. From there, we'll go to Letter G Solicitor Report. Good evening, Mr. Cox.
Good evening, Mr. Salomon. The only things I'd like to report tonight pending the board's questions, of course, are the executive sessions that the board held on the fifth and twelfth of October. Both of those executive sessions were on confidential student matters, potential litigation, and personnel items. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Secretary Mark, for the record, Mr. Tate, good evening. He's now in attendance. Just got a question for the board. I have twenty-four of our community members that have signed up this evening. None of them have checked anything for the agenda items. Most of them have checked non-agenda items. My sense is, let's let the folks talk, speak to us. It's not often we get twenty-four people. So if the board's okay with that, what I will do is, we'll go right down the list. We'll do thirty minutes now, do the rest of board business, we'll move personnel actions up so those folks can go home, and then we'll continue through board business with public comment at the end again, where I left off. Mr. Aldago.
Could we do personnel, maybe? Is that something you wanted to do beforehand?
I recommend, you have to have at least folks who have agenda items that they want to discuss, if there are any, have their public comment session before the board moves on any action item. So yes, you can do personnel first, as long as no one here in this room wants to speak about an agenda item, or in particular, those personnel items.
I don't have anybody noted on this sheet. Does anybody, somebody maybe possibly didn't check it by mistake?
Does anyone here who has signed up for public comment, or who has not signed up for public comment, want to speak on the issue of any of the board's itemized agenda items, or the personnel item?
Okay, Joe, we're going to move personnel items up. You want to -- all right. Dr. Thorbert, would you mind bringing the personnel items up, please?
Sure.
They are?
I found them.
N and L.
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachment to this agenda, and further move to approve the personnel actions addendum as attained as an attachment to this agenda.
Have a second, please. Mr. Hickey, any comment from the board? Personnel actions, any objections from the board? We have two new principals here waiting for us to approve them. Hearing none, I'm going to ask the Secretary Mark, both of them unanimous consent. Dr. Sanco.
Thank you to the Board of School Directors. Congratulations, Jessica and Joe.
And Jessica and Joe, may I call you to the podium? You have a minute to address the board, introduce yourself to the board and the community.
Hi, my name is Jessica Basta. Thank you so much for having me here tonight, and I'm also very thankful for my family that's here tonight, not only my husband and my children, but also my mom, Del, and my dad, John. I'm really excited about the opportunity to impact staff and students in Council Rock School District beyond the capacity that I already have, and I'm really looking forward to getting over to Holland this week and in the coming weeks, and getting to know all the members of my new family there. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Joe Spira. On behalf of my fiancee who's here with me tonight, I want to thank you for this opportunity to work in this community. A big part of this process, it's been students first, I saw that through the people I met in the interviews. I was excited more when I met some of the students as part of that process, and that's been part of my mentality my whole career, and I can't wait to jump in, feet first and head first, and follow that same course of action in Council Rock. So on behalf of us, this is a life-changing opportunity, I can't wait to get going, and thank you very much.
Joe and Jessica, congratulations, welcome aboard, and thank you to all of our other administrators here tonight supporting both Joe and Jessica. Welcome.
I don't want to let them get out of the room. Mr. Tim Ketti, I see you sneaking around in the back there. I, you know, you and I just spoke a couple weeks ago at the Pen Ridge game. I wish you nothing but the best. It's an honor to know you. The Rams up there in Pen Ridge are eagerly awaiting you to take over that school. You've done a great job for our kids, my kids. Thank you for everything, best of luck, and don't forget where you came from, although it's only a couple minutes from your house. All right, you guys can go home now. Have a good evening, thank you, congratulations. All right, from there, we're going to go to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would sincerely ask you to limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of the community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them and deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. Mr. Cox is keeping the time limit, we are starting at thirty minutes, it's starting at seven thirty-nine. First one up is, is it Leoni? Can't make out the last name, from Washington Crossing.
I'm going to defer to Dan.
Sure. He's number two, Mr. Dan Tarrant. I have you down at Newtown, sir, correct?
Yeah, I have you down at Newtown.
So you have six minutes.
That's fine.
Thank you.
There's a bishop in Israel right now, he just offered his life for the sake of rescuing the children from Hamas, and when asked what could be done to fix the problem, he said, I think, he didn't know, right answer policy-wise, he said, why don't we just pray? And I just think that's brilliant, so I'm going to pray, because I think our school needs God. I do youth ministry over at St. Andrews, and I think it's good for all of our kids, so, and we're one nation under God, so I'm just going to say a quick prayer. I'm Catholic, so I'm going to bless myself, Father, Son, I scream amen. Lord God, I pray for this district, I pray that you bless it. There's so many good people here, people who know you, who love you, people who don't know you, but still have love in their hearts for others. I pray that you bless the people involved in this district, and bless the kids, keep them safe, keep them who you made them to be, keep them undeterred in achieving their purpose that you set aside for them in life. In Jesus' name we pray, amen, Father, Son, I scream amen. My big concern, so I'm Dan Tarrant, you guys know who I am, I'm sure by now. It's hard, because I've come to, this is the third time I'm standing before the board, because no one would have an honest conversation with me. And people have said, oh, what do you want, Dan? I want to be, to have a conversation. Somebody said, oh, you should establish all the facts in this formal document, and I just wanted to talk to you. Like, I'm a youth minister at St. Andrews, this huge church with, like, I see over a thousand of your kids, like, and I care about them. And my daughter was raped, and I thought, wow, like, maybe you'd have a conversation with me. And I appreciate Mary Ann taking my phone call, and I don't know what happened with that. I think you said that you told the board our concerns, I don't know. My fear is that, or at least the solicitor, my fear is that the board doesn't know what's happened with Naya, and I honestly felt like, if you gave me ten minutes and a cup of coffee, we could have just sorted it out. And that's what I came here last time to do, and I begged you. I said, can I just have ten minutes with the board just to talk before I deliberate this? And you just ignored me. And then I spoke to Robert Cox, asking for permission to speak to the board, and he just said that he does not agree with that, and he would not endorse the board doing that. And I said, could the board disagree with you and follow their own advice? He said, yes, they legally can do that, but you didn't. And I think that's my concern, is that no one's really expressed an interest in finding out what's happened. Like, if you care about these kids, you have to, you have to express an interest. And I know, as a board, you guys don't have time, I know you're volunteers, but man, like, if a youth minister comes to you on behalf of his own child and the kids here, an African-American girl, like, a minority, sexually raped by a student four or five years older than her in your building, and you can't, like, have a cup of coffee with me? What are you doing? You know, and I'm Catholic, so I go to Mass a lot, and I go to daily Mass sometimes, not as much as I should and would like, but, you know, this past Wednesday, Jesus said to the Pharisees, he said to the Pharisees, you wash the cup on the outside only. And I feel like that's Council Rock, and I take my, I count myself as a part of that. We're not washing the inside of the cup. It looks really nice on the outside, and kids on the inside are having horrible things happen. I'm the guy who started Council Rock Families Speaking, I'm the guy who made the videos, I'm sure you guys knew that. I tried to give my daughter a sense of privacy while still trying to communicate with a board who would not interact with me, and it seemed like that was the solicitor's direction, which just seemed crazy. It seemed crazy if you care about kids. It also seems crazy, like, if you're trying to save money on lawsuits or something, like, here's a guy saying, I'll come to you without a lawyer just to talk, and you would not talk to me. Like, I was coming as a friend, and people asked, oh, what do you want? Establish the facts, set up the, like, I just wanted friendship and a conversation to make it better for our kids. And no one, no one came back to me, and so, I just wanted to give you, just so you understand the events, in case you don't understand them, my daughter was raped by somebody who was four to five years older than her, at knife point, given a morning-after pill later in the bathroom, the guy bought condoms for her at the Seven-Eleven here on school trips, told him that he was going to rape her wearing those condoms. And she's been to CHOP and NOVA, I mean, she's been treated through and through, she's diagnosed with trauma, and you must know my daughter's name by now, right? And you must know the rapist's name by now, right? Because it's in your Title IX report? I assume you've taken an interest in that.
There's a board not to comment.
So sometimes Robert, it makes me wonder who's running the district. Just as a brother in Christ, I worry that an unelected person's running the district. But the person that you have named in your Title IX report that you could read, and in the police report that Naya, we gave Naya's testimony to the police to you, I assumed you read it, I assumed I talked to Mary Ann for an hour on the phone, and she told you the situation, when I came to the board meeting in August, you already knew all the facts. And I thought, surely, they're going to deal with this in a just way. And you didn't, you didn't even respond. Robert Cox at the next meeting said to me, oh, yeah, I'm supposed to call your lawyer back, I owe him a phone call. That was the response a month later? And the whole time, I'm on the clock paying my daughter's tuition at a private school.
Mr. Tarrant, I'll give you fifteen more seconds, sir.
So just to close, my daughter's rape is just the school, you should tell people, this guy in your Title IX report is in jail for stabbing a different teenager after raping my daughter at knife point, and telling her that he would kill her and her two brothers if she ever came forward. Just one second, I know it's inconvenient. And then, you should know that we got death threats from the oyster shucker, and if you don't know what an oyster shucker is, that's raping somebody at knife point, raping a virgin at knife point. And so I had to pick my kids up from school, and you know what I was worried about? These guys think that my kids still go to Council Rock, they're going to pick up some African-American kid outside of Council Rock. And I'm coming to you still as a brother in Christ, as a friend, as someone who has respect, and just wants to be a part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Joanne Tarrant.
I'm on next.
If you're Joanne, yes. Ma'am, I'm going to try to hold you three minutes, okay? Thank you.
I have my bullet points. First, I want to talk about your school-wide visits, Dr. Sanco, that you're doing. They involve, like, you know, instruction, helping the teachers, what are you doing for school safety besides your fire drills? What are, and the ALICE drills? I've been in education for twenty-two years. What about the peer-to-peer violence inside the schools? What are you doing? You're not doing anything. The stories that we have heard from parents, I'm a mandated reporter myself, are disgusting, disgusting, and you are doing nothing. Everything is a facade. Let's bring in the National Mellon Scholars, let's bring in these people, you know, the bands and everything, everything is a little utopia, and it's not. There is real stuff going on in your schools. Vaping is probably the most benign of them all. I am disgusted. These children all deserve a safe environment. You all have a duty of care, Mr. Cox, for these kids. I've been dealing with this since March, when my daughter came out with all of her trauma when she was admitted to CHOP for seven days. Since March, do you know what day that was? The day that the Council Rock North teacher was allegedly arrested for having inappropriate relationship with a minor was the biggest trigger for my daughter. I am speaking the honest-to-God truth. Our family has been turned upside down. I was teaching last week at my school when I had to go outside and call my detective because I received a very cryptic text, and I am a teacher. So then I had to go to my administration because I received a text from the oyster shucker. Do you know what we're living? You sit behind these papers. You, like, my daughter is a business transaction. She is not. You were willing, Mr. Devlin, to give her an NDA for four years of school, which equates to eighty-four thousand dollars. You were trading her silence for her safety, and you already raped You were trading her silence for her safety, and you already raped her. And Nia has given me full permission to talk about this. Mary Ann, I called you.
30 seconds.
I called you. You know the whole story. Whether you people talk is up to you. You failed. And if you fail one, you fail them all, because there's other kids out there that have situations, and they're too scared to talk about them. And if you're a parent, then shame on you. Shame on you.
Next up is Erica Walker. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Erica Walker, I am a resident of Newtown, and mother of two children in the Council Rock School District. It is my understanding that you are all aware now of the bathroom procedure that was implemented in the sixth grade class at Goodno Elementary School. What you may not be aware of, at this point, is that I did complain about this procedure five years ago, October of 2018. In September of 2018, my son was in sixth grade at Goodno, and at that time, he had an IEP. I expressed my extreme concern to his teachers and principal regarding the 25 bathroom nurse visit limit that was implemented by the team in September of that school year. As a result of that complaint, unlimited bathroom access was added to his IEP through an amendment on October 16, 2018. I have documentation of that. My daughter presently is in sixth grade at Goodno Elementary School. I attended back-to-school night on Monday, September 11. The one topic that was not mentioned at back-to-school night was this 25 bathroom and nurse visit procedure policy. According to my daughter, and I stress my daughter, because none of this was communicated to families, the students were told that they were not to exceed 25 bathroom or nurse trips in one marking period. Several other sixth-grade students from different classes also confirmed that they were told the same by their teachers. They were told that if they went over the 25 limit, they would have spaces from the following marking period taken. The first date recorded in her agenda book was September 5, which was the first day of school. The policy was explained to me by my daughter, who was very anxious about the limitations. This kind of led me to conclude that we've reverted back to creating arbitrary policies that go against the district-wide PBIS model, which is described as an evidence-based tiered framework for supporting students' behavioral, academic, social, emotional, and mental health. So my question is, where does this archaic procedure fit into this model? On September 14, I wrote a letter to Dr. Sanco and Mr. Solomon, and expressed my extreme disappointment and disagreement with this policy. I mentioned this is a time when many girls have begun puberty, and I feel strongly that this policy restricts the child's ability to take care of their basic needs at their own discretion. Mr. Solomon and Dr. Sanco both contacted me right away, and it seemed that they genuinely shared my concerns and were willing to explore this policy further. Dr. Sanco mentioned that he spoke to the staff and former principal of the school to gather more information, which I was very appreciative of. I was told someone would follow up with me in a few weeks. But from there, I heard nothing further, until today, at 3:58 PM, when an email was sent home from the sixth-grade team stating, there has never been a policy related to bathroom usage, and there is no limit or consequence connected to the number of times a student uses the bathroom. I do find this ironic, given this board meeting tonight was three hours from when this email was sent. I also find it disturbing that this claim was made when I have proof myself that this procedure or policy was in place in 2018. I never heard from Goodno's staff or administration or anyone else as to the continuation of the policy. The only news communicated to me was by my daughter, who told me that her teacher pulled her aside to let her know she would receive additional pages to add to her agenda book in which she can continue to track her bathroom use, but the limitation of the number of times per marking period had been lifted.
Ma'am, you're up to 3:30.
I'm just about finished, is it okay?
Please.
Thank you, I appreciate it. On October 9, I sent an email directly to her teacher, an IST support teacher, and asked if she's still limited to that 25 times per marking period. I was told she was not, and that she could have unlimited access. I thanked them, and responded by asking the team to please consider the points that I have made when creating systems designed to maintain order in a school, especially those that go against the PBIS model, as we as parents are repeatedly asked to review at home with her, with our children. I did not receive a response, but I could assume my email was read. As I said, it wasn't until today, at 4 o'clock, when my daughter came home from school and told me that the bathroom limitations were lifted. I can only assume that more parents spoke up, as this seems to be an odd coincidence. This was described by staff as a miscommunication. But how can this be a miscommunication, when there was never any communication to begin with? And my last comment, finally, a student should not need a 504 plan or an IEP like my son did five years ago to access the bathroom when he needed the bathroom. It's a basic human need and right that should be offered to all students. And if it takes me speaking at a board meeting to advocate for my daughter having these basic rights, I imagine there are many more students at this school who continue to suffer anxiety and silence over these arbitrary policies. I urge the district and beg you as the board to consider implementing a written policy that does not allow staff to interfere with a student's ability to regulate their own bodies. Thank you for your time. Thanks for letting me go over.
Next up, Roy Rixouski. Good evening, Roy.
Good evening. Roy Rixouski, Northampton Township. I am shocked and disgusted to hear that restrictive bathroom practices are still in place in this district. A little more than a year ago, while South High School was celebrating its newfound blue-ribbon status, I was questioning why a South teacher was not only limiting bathroom use for 15- and 16-year-old students, but also offering extra points to students who did not go to the bathroom for the entire marking period. Let that sink in. Extra points for not going to the bathroom. This was a first for me, after working in public education for 30 years, the last 17 as a school administrator. In my complaint to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the PDE, I stated my concerns about this practice, that limiting bathroom use and incentivizing not using the bathroom is inhumane and abusive, that the practice may cause harmful physical and psychological effects, such as urinary tract infections, bowel issues, and increased anxiety, not to mention the potential for public humiliation for young women. Grades should reflect proficiency in a subject area, not a student's ability to hold it in. The practice does not reflect a students-first, always mindset. You would have thought that a complaint to the PDE would have led to real change. Apparently, it did not. In an effort to resolve my complaint about South, I also asked if these archaic practices were occurring throughout the district. Part of the resolution to my complaint included an email from an administrator dated November 3, 2022, stating, please know that the policy limiting bathroom use has been discontinued. There is no district-wide policy on bathrooms usage, rather, teachers are asked to be responsive to any student who needs to use the bathroom, end quote. I am disappointed that this administrator was less than truthful with me. Another part of the resolution to my complaint to the PDE was a copy of a memo from another administrator to the teacher involved, dated September 26, 2022, stating, quote, please discontinue the classroom practice that offers extra points for limited use of bathroom facilities, end quote. I am further disappointed to hear that this practice has also resumed at South. One of the first rules of school leadership, particularly when you are interested in gaining the trust and confidence of parents and community, is to do what you say you will do. The administration has been aware of these harmful
30 seconds.
bathroom practices for over a year, and nothing has been done to effect systemic change in this area. Stop saying students first, always, until you are ready to live up to that. Those words don't mean anything when practices like this are allowed to continue. If you want to demonstrate that you truly put students first, always, then I leave you with this challenge. Do not leave here tonight until you have worked together to craft and approve a district-wide policy that prohibits staff from imposing arbitrary limits on students' use of the bathroom. Act tonight to protect our kids, regain our trust, and put students first.
Thank you, sir. Next up, is it Lauren Phillip from Northampton? Is that right? Great, thank you, good evening.
Good evening. My name's Lauren Phillip. I'm the mother of three children in the Council Rock School District. My oldest has graduated, and I have a third, a sixth and a third grader at Churchville Elementary. I'm here tonight over the concern I have with how the school keeps allowing the same child, who has physically, emotionally, and racially been bullying kids for the last couple of years. Council Rock has a bullying policy that states bullying creates an atmosphere of fear, intimidation, and detracts from the safe environment necessary for students to learn, and may lead to serious violence. My question is, what is considered serious violence for Council Rock? Is it the multiple police reports that this child has against him from other students? Is it the multiple physical assaults he has on other children? Is it the racist hateful names that he says to kids? Is it the grabbing the kids in the private parts that he does? All of what I just stated sounds like bullying, and sounds like it detracts from the safe environment for kids, and sounds like serious violence to me. But the same child is still allowed, unsupervised, on the bus, at recess, and is still causing fear and intimidation to other kids. Two weeks ago, my boys came home from school and were telling me the hateful racist names that were being screamed and thrown around on the bus from this child. He was also screaming the same names out the window at people. I started to write an email to the principal, and then stopped and said to my husband that it was pointless, as we have had multiple incidents with no real consequences that happened, and I wasn't going to waste my time, as I have in the past. The next week, my sixth grader gets off the bus, and I can see he is visibly upset. And he told me how this child was calling his friend sitting next to him on the bus, a cotton-picking, and I'll leave the rest, I'm sure you guys can guess, and that kept saying that over and over, and wouldn't stop until my son said, it's enough, no one thinks you're funny. And at that point, this child continued to say to my son, what are you gonna do about it? And then proceeded to hit him in the head and push him back. This is the same situation as, that occurred last year with a different child, when he was calling an Asian child Rachel Slurges for weeks, until this child had it and stuck up for himself, which at that point, I think that child got in trouble for that. Kids shouldn't have to continually, continuously be put in these situations, or be put in a situation where they are scared
30 seconds.
They are scared to speak up because they see nothing, they see nothing, sorry, oh no, they see nothing as done. This is the second incident with my son, and it continues, and the school district has done nothing, and has continued to allow this child to be in school. I don't know what it's gonna take for this child to have consequences, but it's going to cause somebody to be really hurt, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Amen. Next up is Hank Schmidt. Is it Schmidt or Schrant? Hank?
That's possible.
Sorry. You just state your name for the record, though. What do you think, again?
Good evening, my name is Hank Schrant, I'm from Newtown, Region 9, so, I have my eye on them, so, anyway, I'm here to, well, first off, I can't, I don't recognize a school board meeting anymore. Last time I've really been to a school board meeting was like 15, 20 years ago. I don't recognize this. I'm just shocked what I just saw. So, I just wanted to share that with you. And I also have a handout I want to share with the board. It's about what Ed and I talked about at the last month's meeting, about the lack of teachers being available, so I, because I made a copy for all of you, should I distribute it, or somebody come and distribute it?
Yeah, you can, Mrs. Crawford, could you grab it? Thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't even know where to start after that. But anyway, I wanted, yeah, if you pass that around, maybe, because everybody should have a copy. What I'm sharing is information that has a line chart, it's a trend of teachers graduating with degrees each year. So I'll wait until they get their copies of the information. And this is a follow-up from last month's meeting. And I'll try and keep it brief. I want everybody to understand what the information means, and understand the simple math behind it. So, it basically has a trend of graduating teachers with their teaching, the degrees and passing the Praxis test, and getting their license. So, there's, this is a line chart that shows the trend going downward from like 2013. Normally, graduating class year would be about 18,000 teachers graduating in the state of Pennsylvania. And, and this is just only information about Pennsylvania, but this is a trend showing it going downward over time. So, in normal years, it's about 18,000 that graduate a year in Pennsylvania. So the trend's been going down well before the pandemic, and
30 seconds, sir.
Oh, 30 seconds? I, I wanted you to see the chart. All right, so anyway
30 seconds back, how's that?
Okay.
One minute.
All right, so, 2022, 5,100 graduated. So if the trend stays there and continues, that means on average in the state of Pennsylvania, that each school district would only be able to continue on with about 30% of their teachers, because there's not enough teachers. That's what the math comes down to. So if the trend continues, but the lowest point was 2022, it may still go down. And then the flip side is the retention rate, it's 7.7% per year for, well, I mean, for 2020, it's been going up since a low of, well, actually, it was even, was even lower than 5.4% in prior years of 2021. But the trends of attrition's going up, and the trends of teachers coming way down, and the emergency certifications are going beyond the certified teachers, about 6,000 of 2022. So, do the math, I hope you know how to do math. I mean, better than girls, anyway. So, as you say. So, anyway, do the math. I recommend that we have two approaches as far as how to, well, have organizations at the student level, try to encourage them to become teachers, you know, have mentoring in the middle school, high school, and have programs, and celebrate the teachers, because our assets are supposed to be students first, students first, and then the teachers are second. So, if we don't have this, you know, if we're not doing a poor job with students, and poor job with teachers, we're doing, we know the numbers. So do something. I'll try to help, but do the math.
Thank you. Next up is Wendy King. Wendy King, we'll go to, is it, I apologize, is it Helena from Northampton? Rivas, R, is it R-I-V-A-S? From there, I'll go to Wendy Nowicki. Sorry, you're gonna pass completely?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Jonathan Siemens. Three minutes, sir, just state your township, please.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Siemens, I live in Newtown. And in full disclosure, I'm also a candidate for the Council Rock School Board this year. I just wanna commend, in contrast to the speakers before me, the work of this board and the superintendent. Since the end of 2021, this board has been incredibly productive, replaced a divisive, ineffective superintendent, you created a new tax and rebate program for the families of Council Rock, you set new policies and programs to address learning loss incurred across the district to keep, that was caused by schools being closed and kids being masked, and you eliminated the last vestiges of school closings and mask mandates. I am here tonight because I'm concerned that if the disinformation currently circulating in the community about me and other candidates are successful in scaring the good people of Council Rock, the progress of this board on behalf of all the families and students will stop and potentially be reversed. One of the current members of this board is complicit in spreading this misinformation and lies. To that end, I would like to share the following quote from that board member. To that end, I would like to share the following quote from that board member. "I am also concerned that school boards have become increasingly politicized and less collegial. My intent has always been to encourage civility and collaboration. But yet, we all continue to see letters and flyers in our mailboxes and posts on social media trying to scare the good people of Council Rock with talk of book bans and out-of-state millionaires ruining our school district. This current board member continues to allow his name and picture to accompany district-wide mailings containing these falsehoods. The truth is that the people trying to undo the success of this board are the ones taking the money in in-kind contributions from groups outside of Council Rock and Bucks County. These actions are shameful. A candidate claiming to quote 'encourage civility and collaboration', as Mr. Tate does in the quote above, should not spread lies in an attempt to win an election. Do the people trafficking these lies really think other board members will want to work with someone so dishonest about the very reason they are running for election? I urge the Council Rock community to remember what 2020 and 2021 were like for our kids and our families with closed schools and mask mandates. And please remember who brought us those policies."
Thank you, sir. Next up is Heather Gottlieb. I've already said yes to the first one, so... You have three minutes. Okay.
So, I'm gonna stay on track here. There's a quote out there that "we are all like books. Most people only see our cover. The minority only read the introduction. And many people believe the critics, and few will know the content. And I'm going to tell you the content, because I've been with my daughter since March 9th, when she started experiencing significant PTSD and was admitted to CHOP for seven days. And then I had to take an unpaid leave of absence, because my school doesn't have, you know, what you guys have is public educators. And I had to take a leave of absence and drive my daughter to CHOP 25 days straight, to and from, for the therapy, for the trauma therapy that she needed. Significant. And her homeschool teachers were amazing. They were fabulous. But I'm gonna tell you the introduction right now. "Summer of 2021 extended school year for special education under the supervision of Patty Eiker as the supervisor at Council Rock North. Heterogeneously mixed middle schoolers and high schoolers who receive emotional support..." And by the way, if you're not familiar with emotional support, it could be a very broad spectrum. It could be children that have anxiety, like my daughter was predisposed to, and it could be also the other end of the spectrum of kids who really need a lot of support for their emotions. And they had them in the same building over at Council Rock North, for whatever reason. Maybe the shortage from COVID. I don't know what that reason was. Budgeting, who knows? Not only were they in the same building, when my daughter was interviewed by the forensics person, they asked Nia if she was in the same... If the alleged perpetrator was in the same classroom as her. And she said no originally, because she was... She's all clouded. If you know anything about trauma, she's so clouded at that time, when it was so raw. And she's just feeling out who she can trust. Yeah, but guess what? Technically, we learned from the detective, bullseye, they were in the same freaking classroom. My daughter was in one cohort, he was in another cohort, in the same physical classroom. The big rule for, you know...
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
Yeah, so anyway, our daughter had just completed 7th grade, Mr. Cox, and she was in a classroom with someone going into his senior year of high school. At least a three-year age gap. At least a three-year age gap. And now he's in prison, just so you know. And we've received threats. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Everly, just to make the record show, we went 35 minutes on public comment. We will go to the... We'll continue down the agenda and come back to public comment, and hopefully get to the rest of the list. From there, we'll move to letter I, approval of minutes. Mr. Tate, would you mind, sir? Mr. Ricky, would you mind?
Booting up a machine, thank you.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the school board directors held on September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Second, Mrs. McKee. Is there any comments from the board? Any objections from the board? Hearing none, I'll ask the secretary to mark that unanimous. From there, we'll move to Education Committee. Mrs. McKee, good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Solomon. The Education Committee met on September 28th. We had a full agenda, so please indulge me as I provide a report of. First, I want to talk about the Pennsylvania Seal of Biliteracy, which the district is exploring. This would recognize students who demonstrate proficiency in English and at least one additional world language upon graduation. Furthermore, we had updates on the Council Rock Summer Academy, Nights for Knowledge, and Extended School Year. There'll be some changes to Nights for Knowledge, which will expand those nights to include English Language Arts in addition to math. And it will also expand to include students in grades 3 through high school. Additionally, Nights for Knowledge will be offered in various buildings, starting at the end of the school day, and they will take place two days a week over the course of four weeks. Similar to last year, students will be recommended by their teachers, but of course, no student will be turned away. Also on our agenda was information about the Pennsylvania Youth Survey. The survey is anonymous, and it is voluntary, and will be administered to grades 8, 10, and 12. We were joined that night by Dr. Tom Barnes, coming to us again with a presentation on the most recent 2023 PSSA results. We appreciate Dr. Barnes, his analysis of the data, as that will help inform us on our long-term planning and implementation. Information and discussion also occurred on the Council Rock Leadership Development Program and professional learning communities. And finally, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit will lead a review of the Council Rock English Language Development Program. That review will take place next week. We look forward to receiving the report of their findings. And finally, I just want to take the opportunity to thank all the various administrators and teachers who joined us on that evening and presented on the various agenda items. Furthermore, my appreciation to my board colleagues for their participation in discussion of these topics. As that concludes my report, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items B, C, and D, as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Have a second. Oh, Mr. Tate, have a second. Is there any further comment from the board? Any objections? Hearing none, I'll ask the secretary to mark that unanimous. From there, we'll go down to letter E, Bucks County IU. Good evening, Ms. Pally.
Good evening. The Bucks IU Board met last Tuesday, October 17th. There was a presentation on the IU Feeding Support Team, which is a cross-disciplinary team of speech-language pathologists and occupational therapists. Their goal is to support students' needs in the educational setting so that students can participate to the greatest extent in school routines. There was also a presentation of the Career Ready Bucks Organization and website. This program is managed through the IU. It is a combined effort of a diverse group of personnel representing Bucks County educational entities, working with businesses and organizations from a broad range of industries to support career planning and pathways that best serve the needs of our Bucks County students. There was a reflection on the positive gains of the 2022-23 school year, and a review of the goals for expansion during the 23-24 school year. I would also like to share that after discussing our financial gains in Council Rock using an investment consulting firm, the IU sent out RFPs to examine the possibility of using a similar asset management firm. We conducted the interviews, and next Monday, the IU Finance Committee will meet to make a decision. And it is nice to share best practices with the IU and among the other school districts. The next IU Board meeting is scheduled for November 21st. This happens to be Thanksgiving week.
Great, thank you, ma'am. From there, we'll go down to G, Council Rock Education Foundation. Good evening, Mr. Tate.
Good evening, Mr. Solomon. Thank you. Not much to say about golf, except we're playing Monday, and there's a couple of slots open. And the weather forecast looks great. So, I invite anybody interested to go to the CREF website. Most important is, we're thrilled to announce that the Council Rock Education Foundation Innovative Learning Grant Cycle is now open. And we're eagerly awaiting teachers' visionary proposals. As you know, it's a major part of our mission, the foundation's mission, to enhance and elevate educational opportunities for Council Rock students. The Grants Portal will be open until February 21st. There will be two informational sessions offered between now and then. The first one is November 4. If you'd like to learn more about the program, you can visit the CREF website and click on the Grants tab. Since 2007, CREF has supported over 160 educator initiative and district-approved innovative projects and programs benefiting Council Rock students. That totals nearly a half million dollars above the annual school budget with no impact to taxpayers. In this school year alone, CREF Innovative Learning Grants have impacted every elementary school, both middle schools and both high schools in Council Rock. In addition to supporting our students through innovative learning grants, CREF has been happy to donate thousands more to district-wide events and initiatives, such as the annual STEAM Night held at Council Rock High School South, and the Raising Our Kids, Great Kids, available to all CR families. We can't wait to see what brilliant ideas our educators are gonna have this year. Now through October 29th, on another matter, CREF and Shady Brook Farm have teamed up for Fall Fest 2023. You can purchase your tickets using the coupon code 23CREF to receive 10% off tickets and help support educational opportunities for Council Rock School District students. And finally, Tuesday night, the CREF Board met and approved a new strategic three-year plan for the foundation. It was created with the assistance of the same team from the Bucks IU that helped the district produce a comprehensive plan. So, CREF has a new strategic plan. It'll be on the website, and we'll invite you to take a look. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ricky, I apologize for jumping over you. We will move back up to letter F. MBIT, good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Nikolenko for her presentation, as well as she gives a very good update and keeps abreast of everything that's happening at MBIT. In addition to some of the things that she may have mentioned, we met on October 9th. Some of the highlights of that meeting were, was MBIT was named the winner in the Best of Bucksmont for Technical High Schools. A nice honor that just, you know, some of the accolades just keep on coming in. There will also be an open house that I'll probably remind you about next month as well. It'll be December 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Beauty Salon, for those of you who may want it, is now open for business. They also held their first budget meeting last month, which included both superintendents and the business managers from each of the sending districts. Last month, I mentioned there was an emphasis on the teachers at MBIT and recognizing them and the good work that they do. Part of that, the teachers had a Professional Development Day. There were three presenters at this event who were chosen by their peers, so it was actually mentors, mentoring teachers at this event. The annual health and fire inspections are now complete. Security upgrades, of which I cannot go into, they are nearly finished. And one possibility that was discussed going forward is since MBIT is becoming much more competitive to get into, the possibility is raised of maybe interviewing students as well as some of the other methods that they are currently using now to allow students into it. So, they're thinking about possibly having interviews. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 13th, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. From there, we'll go to Policy Committee.
Yeah, real quick, I'm gonna go off the cuff here. I was gonna talk about book banning misinformation, but I'm gonna punt that to the end of the meeting. The lady that was talking about the timing of the response for the bathroom stuff left. Maybe I can help put a stake in that forever. Can I... Is there anybody on the board that has a problem with me directing Mr. Cox and Dr. Sanco to write a policy that makes what we just heard about not part of Council Rock ever again?
No objection.
And perhaps, if I could pigtail off of Mrs. McKee's education meeting next week, we can do a first read and vote it in the following board meeting, because, again, I said put a stake in it for a reason. It keeps coming back to life, and I want to end it forever. Unless I hear someone say otherwise, I know it's a short leash, Mr. Cox and Dr. Sanco, but let's end this. Figure out how to end it, and put some teeth in it so it doesn't absolutely... Oh, I didn't know, will come back later. I've seen it enough. I've heard enough. It needs to end. So, I flipped my lid this morning when I got another email about it. I'm done. So, let's see if we can fix this so it never happens again. End of my report.
Thank you, sir. From there, we'll go to the Finance Committee. Ms. Pally, you taking the first half of that?
The Finance and Facilities Committee met last Thursday and discussed various items. Some of them are on the agenda today, but some others, like the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan Summer Projects, need further work before they come to the board for approval. Mr. Rapp notified us that the Act 1 index this year is 5.3%, and it needs to be passed by January 4th. As you know, this is standard procedure, and does not mean that we will increase taxes by that amount. Mr. Rapp also reviewed the 23-24-year-to-date financial results for revenues and expenditures. The trends are as expected. The board tonight is asked to approve appraisal services for three properties: the Chancellor Center, the Twining Ford Property, and the Richborough Middle School. This information will be used for future planning. And I don't know if Mr. Tate wants to add anything on the facilities update.
Thank you, Ms. Pally. I'll point out that among the things on the agenda relating to facilities is an item to higher Indian Valley appraisal for a proposal to appraise the Chancellor Center, Richborough Middle School, and Twining Ford Properties. And as Ms. Pally said, we had an extensive presentation at the facilities meeting about the potential summer projects for the coming year. And if anyone's interested, the recording is on our YouTube site. Thank you.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items B through L, as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Mr. No... Or Dr. No, I apologize. Is there any further board comment? B through L in Finance Committee.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say, on the appraisal, I think that it's probably... This is a great start, but I expect, as we heard in committee, that there are several properties that have not been renovated but are on a cycle to be renovated. And getting appraisals for those properties as well would be a good thing for our future planning.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. Anybody else? Any objections? Hearing none, I'll ask the secretary to mark B through L unanimous as well. Ms. Pally, you want to take that last one there? Letter M, I'm sorry.
Okay. You can go there. I move to approve the statement and notice regarding employee number 10009, as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Have a second on this?
Second.
Mr. Spring, any comment on this? Are you allowed to come? All right, good. Is there any further comment from the board? Sorry? I didn't think so. That's why I wanted to get that clear. Any other comments from the board on this? Any objections? Hearing none, I'll ask the secretary to mark that unanimous as well. As we did NNO personnel actions, from there, we're gonna move down to public comment. You heard my disclaimer early. Please, let's try to stick to the three minutes if you can. I hate breaking you off in mid-sentence, but I will to give a 30-second warning. From there, we're gonna pick up on the list Beth Rodman from Northampton. Good evening, Beth.
Hi. Hello, good night, everybody. I'm calling... I'm here just to show my support of the board and the direction that it has been going. I do not currently have any children. My youngest child, in the district, I should say. My youngest child graduated in 2021. And it was because of many of the people on the board who got these kids back in school. And she was one of the ones, I have to say, probably one of the few seniors who was actually in school that, what, twice... who was actually in school that what, twice a week and then the three days and the five, because she loved being in school. She loved being with the teachers. She loved the interaction. She was a student leader, a student athlete, still is, um, and doing very well in college. And I want to thank everyone who was behind that and helping to help that happen. I also liked what Dr. Sanco had to say about the, uh, being out in the schools. You haven't been here that long. You're just getting out there, getting to know, you know, you knew a group from where you were. You're getting out, you're getting to know everybody. Things don't change overnight. You have to get out there, meet your teachers where they are, get to know them, see what the dynamics are before you can affect real change. And I thank you for starting that process and I, for one, don't expect something to happen overnight, but that it's a process and it had, you know, and things keep going and bulldogging going forward. I also want to comment about the teacher shortage. I'm a nurse. I work at a child and adolescent psych hospital. We also have three approved private schools. I'm over the nurse managers there. So I'm very well-versed in what the shortages look like. It's not here. It's not just here. It's everywhere. I have nurses who don't show up for interviews. So I understand the pain in trying to find people and qualified people and, you know, I, as a board, I don't know what you can do to attract people. I wish I did. I wish, because we could, we're trying where I'm at as well. And I, so I feel the pain for your HR department, all your principals and all your heads, uh, department heads. And then I think I just lost, and I don't want to go over the three minutes, but I want to give my support to Ed, um, who is currently running. He is my district and I'm fully behind him. And I know he has been an integral part in getting, um, keeping us on board, students first, keeping things fiscally responsible, still trying to get, um, innovative programs going. I also enjoyed hearing about CREF. I was involved in 2007. Ms. Fran Rupp.
30 seconds.
Too, and so I'm so glad to hear that it is still going strong and that mission is going. So thank you for everyone. Thank you.
Next up is Vanessa Smith. Good evening.
I am here tonight to call out the lies going around in our district from Together for Council Rock PAC and candidates. I know this because the lies are about me personally. They have sent out tons of communication telling you all that parents are demanding books be banned. One flyer in particular claims that two Moms for Liberty members have advocated for banning 34 books in Council Rock. I am that mom they are speaking of, except they lied to you. There are emails, public comment, district employees that can prove this, that these are lies. I wouldn't be ashamed of it, but I am not a member of Moms for Liberty. I was asked to be, but had to decline. Actually, Moms for Liberty members pay dues. I have not paid dues. During the January 13, 2022 board meeting, I made a public comment on books I found in our libraries with inappropriate sexual content. I specifically said, we are not coming to ban these books. We are asking for parental consent. You see, my intentions were never to ban, really removal, as schools don't even have the power to ban, but I asked for awareness. Through emails, meetings with district employees, I gave ideas on ways that we could bring awareness that would be a compromise for however you feel about books. I asked for parental consent for books with inappropriate content. I asked for emails to be sent to parents with the books that their children took out of the library or to rate the books almost like movies so kids and parents can be aware of the content in the books on our shelves. I did not, sorry, I did write an email that contained 30 some books that I asked to be reviewed for great appropriateness, for awareness purposes, not for removal. In response, I received the steps for the challenging, uh, challenging a book for removal, a five-page Google form to fill out. I did not take those steps. I had a meeting with just district employees, 8/10/2022, and again stated, I didn't want removal but awareness. Due to no plans in the works for awareness, even after many meetings and emails, on 8/26/2022, seven months after my initial public comment, I challenged the book Gender Queer for Removal. It contains pictures that the solicitor said had, could not be displayed on the screen in the school board meeting because it was too graphic, but it could be in our libraries. But it's also the same book that encourages girls to masturbate using their fingers or objects and then taste it. Clearly appropriate school reading material for children 14 to 17. The committee decided the book would stay. Again, with no plans of awareness on 1/7/2023, a year later, I challenged the book sold. The book has detailed descriptions of men raping children and sex slavery. From the book, "You're lucky to be with me, Habib. He's squeezing my breast with one hand like someone shopping for a melon, then grabs the other. He unbuckles his belt. He removes my dress. He is then on top of me and something hot and insistent is between my legs. He grunts and struggles, trying to fit himself inside me with a sudden thrust. I am torn in two. I hurt, I am torn and bleeding where the men have been. I pray to the gods to make the hurting go away, to make the burning and the ache and the bleeding stop. Yes, I asked for this to be removed from a library for 12-year-olds to 17-year-olds, but the committee decided it would stay. Without awareness, your child doesn't know what is in these books they're about to read and they can't erase it from their minds. I have not challenged another book in the last nine months. So you see, Together for CR have been lying to you. The whole campaign is based on lies. Do you really want board members who are going to lie for your vote? I also believe I'm owed an apology from the PAC and the candidates, but I won't hold
Next up, Michelle Christian.
I don't know how I come up here next. I have been here numerous times to the dismay of many of you, especially our president. There have been times where he wasn't real happy to see me here. But I have to say, regardless of party, regardless of this board, past boards, um, I've always felt that you guys do do the right thing. I don't always feel like it in the moment and I have been here to complain about it quite a bit, but our kids needed you and you were there. I have to say, I'm already getting emotional because I know my kids were the lucky kids and it's because of you guys. And I've traveled around the country. I have family and friends and they would say to me, what do you mean your kids are in school? They were floored. Your kids are in school? My, my kid's depressed at home and I can't get them a therapist. And I said, no. I said, and we're outside of Philadelphia and they thought that was crazy. And it's because of you. And, and I want to thank everyone here for all that you did. And I know some were against it and you had to sit through all of us being upset and some for and against, but the mental health of our children, I call them the COVID kids because these kids are never going to get it back. I've never seen moms search for therapists like I saw. Masks are a whole nother issue, but having them in school, having that social contact, not staring at a screen, our kids were all attached. I'm having anxiety because I left my phone five feet away from me. Our children were learning on nothing more than a tablet, a computer screen, their phone. They were, and I think in the beginning you had them doing work only, you know, by the end of the day, it, it was terrible. My son, I always try not to bring them up, he said to me when applying to college, he's in college now, he's like, I can't go to college. I didn't really go to high school. And how horrible is that? He was scared to go, but our district did better than the other districts and it's this board that did it for them. I had a whole bunch of other things I want to say, but I'm going to stay on this point. I wanted to talk about things that, and thank you, because what I heard from this mom sitting next to me needs to be dealt with, so I appreciate that. You all deal with a lot and it means so much. And again, I don't usually get emotional talking to you, but this impact on our children, our kids, and I complained with my older teenagers, but I don't know how parents did it with a kindergartner and a six-year-old and a seven-year-old and, and how are they adjusting now? Who are they having friends? What are they doing socially, mentally, academically? We can't let that ever happen again. We need this board to continue in the route it's going in. I thank you all. I know our candidates running are, are in a bad spot. There have been some things that have been said. The other candidates, I, I salute them all. It's horrible to be a candidate. I have been there, done that, would never want to do that again. It is a horrible thing to think you are being lied about. What matters is the kids. We are on the right path. I am so happy we have a new superintendent. Thank you. I haven't met you yet. I hope not to meet you because that means there's no issues and I don't have to go to you, but I, I really, really appreciate all that you have done. My three kids went through this school district. My daughter is amazingly intelligent, which is crazy that she's my child. She throws me under the bus for how smart she is. She's just, I'm down here and she's up here and that's because of Council Rock. Council Rock did that for her. My boys are the same. They are amazing and, and I really want to thank this school district for that. I'm not from here. I'm from North Jersey. We moved here specifically for the schools. We lived in a teeny tiny house that we couldn't afford to be in Council Rock when we first moved here. So, um, you got an emotional me tonight. I want to thank you. Please, Council Rock, let's keep this momentum going because any change could really, really set our kids back and the learning loss and the mental loss, we, we need them going forward. Thank you.
Next up is Alex Enton. Alex Enton. Next up is Ann Horner.
Good evening. Ann Horner from Northampton. Full disclosure, I am running for the Council Rock School Board in Region 7. Dr. Sanco, thank you for mentioning at the start of every meeting to make sure the community knows, to be aware of misinformation about, around social media and outside information. The famous saying is, don't believe everything you see, hear and read. Do plenty of thorough research, ask questions and follow up. Don't be fooled and don't be deceived. I have been living in and serving in this community for 15 years and I have earned my reputation. I'm proud of my good name here and I will continue to serve in the community. For many months now, there's been misinformation and false narratives from the following groups, which will be heard as these groups throughout this public comment. These groups are the Council Rock Democrat Candidates, PA Democrat Party and the Northampton Democrat Party, Bucks United, Indivisible Bucks and other groups and members of Bucks County that need to be made public and the truth openly exposed. These groups have consistently been lying and misleading our community and I am here to set the record straight. After today, the truth will be known and I would hope that everyone involved in these groups will stop spreading false information and focus on the issues that are important to the education of our, our children. I will not allow my name, my character or my family's name to be tarnished by false information and lies that the Council Rock Democrat Candidates, PA Democrat Party and the Northampton Democrat Party and other members in Bucks County think they can capitalize on by their selfish reasons. What are these false narratives? Council Rock has a policy 109 in place for a reason. No one is asking to ban books. The word salad out there has created chaos and is just not accurate. I have stated publicly and in writing that I will not support any form of book banning and I stand behind policy 109 that is in place to ensure what is best for all students at age appropriate levels. Another false narrative trying to be spun is being a member follower of a social media page, which does not make one an actual member of an organization. Really strange, the attack on me, a mom, who has been advocating for years for all kids, staff and teachers, and has been an active member of the community continues to be lied about. All candidates of Friends of Council Rock.
30 seconds.
Are not an active member of such organization and not one candidate was asked to be endorsed. We are not hiding anything or from anything. These groups who spin this narrative and did no further research to find the truth, it is alarming how parents who stand up for children continue to be labeled as hateful as there are many other groups that are very hateful and spewing these lies. These groups labeled me as an extremist. How dare they label moms who pair with the same label they put on terrorists? I condemn terrorists as they should too. The evil and hate coming from these groups is frightening. It is not good for our kids and, and the community. These groups stated I support the PA Family Council. I had to look up that family council as I was not familiar with the name or the group. I found I follow PA Family Council on social media, just as I follow hundreds of groups on social media. I do support families and I didn't realize my protecting and supporting families was so wrong. The Council Rock Democrat Candidates, Northampton Democrat Party and the PA Democrat Party and other Democrat members of Bucks County lie and smear other candidates, fully knowing their followers will just believe it. They won't take care to go look up the truth for themselves. These candidates don't know how to run on an honest campaign and love to spew the hate.
Ms. Horner, I got to cut you off. Thank you.
All right. Well, they want to keep the politics out of school, but yet here we are with all the political games and lies. They can't give facts and can't win an argument with valid points. I, as well as the candidates of Friends of Council, Council Rock have and will continue to run on facts, truth and merit. We will stand up for the best education, safety and protection for all children and the community. Thank you.
Next up is Lori Berry. Three minutes, please. Your best.
Yeah, I'll do my best, just like other people got extra time, so.
I, I will.
We can never forget what happened March 13th, 2020 to our children, our community and our normal way of life. When the COVID lockdowns happened, everyone pulled together to help flatten the curve as, to help flatten the curve. As the nation realized that two weeks was not enough time, Council Rock Schools switched to online learning. It soon became clear to most parents that remote learning was less than effective. Everyone did the best they could to complete the 2020 spring semester. Many students struggled both academically and socially. To this day, we still see the lingering effects. In July 2020, there was a survey sent out by then Superintendent Frazier directed towards Council Rock families regarding the upcoming fall semester. The most impactful question that I recall was, based on what I know at this time, I am likely to send my child to school in September. 60% of our school district parents voted yes for this. I recall that the initial number was in this 70 or 80% range, but then that result was inexplicably removed and replaced with this lower number, still majority. As we all know from actual events, a vocal minority managed to keep the Council Rock Schools closed for another six months out of fear of a virus that had the same impact on young, healthy children as the seasonal flu. It was only through the actions of the school board that normal education returned. Fear can make people irrational, but these brave board members did what was best for the students, students first and the community. I'm not here to talk only about COVID, but I am here to talk about community, education and our path forward and what will ultimately define us as we look to support candidates for the Council Rock School Board. There is so much disinformation, fabrication and character assassination taking place that it needs to be addressed. The focus must remain on policy, future policies and not the political party. These candidates have stepped forward to serve our community and children in this unpaid and often thankless position. These are good people being carpet bombed by party politics, buzzwords and outright fabrications. The intent is to trigger emotions and avoid real issues. Let's try to not be manipulated. Our children's education and life skills are at stake. To that end, I propose we have a candidate debate such that people can hear directly from the candidates. It should be easy to arrange the gathering within a week. It can be held right here in this very room. With all the political background noise, we owe it to the people of the district and the candidates to have real discussions on the pressing issues before us. As a final note, I do want to recognize the accomplishments and contributions that the school board has made since the 2020 school year. I hope that the community recognizes candidates like Ann Horner, who has attended every school board meeting since COVID began. She has stepped forward to serve, even though her son graduated from MBIT this past year. That is the definition of engagement. Thank you.
Next up is Natalia from Newtown. Good evening. Can you just state your last name for the record, please?
Natalia Cavalia from Newtown. And I'm going to pick up a little bit about bullying in the schools. I stand here as a mom, neighbor, volunteer, professional and school board candidate who wants what is best for children. As someone who decided to run for school board because I believe kids should be kids and education should be education, I'm appalled and disgusted by what is being said by my opponent in her political committee. Every flyer that has been put out is nothing more than divisive, hostile, deceiving work of a political party. Yet my opponent says that she wants to keep politics out of school. She's bringing hostility into the schools. Their PAC, Together for Council Rock, on behalf of six Democrat Candidates, calls this extremist, claims were funded by some dark money millionaires and regurgitate. this extremists, claims we're funded by some dark money millionaires, and regurgitates the same fake narrative of book bans. They're being dishonest. The truth is, I have been a parent in this community for the past 17 years. My kids go to school with Tracy's kids. I have no idea what extremist national hate group I'm part of unless Tracy thinks that being a parent is a hateful group itself, which is bizarre concerning and concerning considering the position that she's running for. Tracy's political committee claims that we are funded by millionaires. My financial reports are public record and will quickly prove this claim to be false. Meanwhile, Democrats are going to outspend Republicans by leaps and bounds. The Together for Council Rock campaign is based on false narrative of book bans. At Tate, a sitting Democrat board member himself acknowledged that there has never been talk about banning books, nor is there such a policy in Council Rock. Why is he appearing on ads claiming that other board members are banning books? Their campaign is nothing more than extremely costly political propaganda. And on a side note, this is a great example of where schools should be teaching kids, how to be truthful, how to decipher propaganda, how to do research, and how to think and speak for yourself, and also how to stand up to bullies like Together for Council Rock. Tracy Osseki and others are deceiving the public, and it's wrong. The community should ask them to come here and substantiate their dishonest claims. They use Facebook as their source of facts. I have a daughter at Godnow, I volunteer at many events, I taught art classes, and was a Girls on the Run coach. How can my opponent Tracy Osseki explain to her own kids, her neighbors, my kids, and their friends that she lied and bullied another parent in our school to get elected?
Thirty seconds.
What do you think the impact will be on my kids? What if they get hurt or bullied over the false claims? Together for Council Rock and Tracy Osseki doesn't care about kids. Where's Tracy's integrity, honesty, and transparency that she speaks about? Our opponent are bullies, nothing more, nothing less. They speak about protecting others while attacking members of a minority group. I'm an immigrant from Ukraine, I'm Jewish, and I'm a woman, and that's who they're attacking. Their current actions speak loud for themselves. They will hurt your kids like they're hurting my kids. Voters need to know who is who. Politics does not belong in schools. My stand has always been simple: keep politics out of school, educate kids, spend money on impactful projects, and most importantly, be honest and do the right thing. Thank you.
Next up is Bernadette Heenan. I'm sorry, Bernadette. I thought it said Heenan, it starts with an H. Northampton. Not here. Next, former board member Bernadette Heenan. I thought so. Next up, Debbie Evangelou.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to address a very concerning misinformation and smear campaign being waged by the school board candidates known as Together for Council Rock, one of whom is a current minority school board director. I have lived in Richborough for over 27 years, have raised four children here, and all have attended Council Rock schools. In all these years, I have never experienced such a blatant assault on a sitting school board majority. Council Rock residents are receiving letters from these candidates warning that the current school board majority and the like-minded candidates running for school board will politicize education and adopt politicized curriculums. They are wrongfully being called extremists, being accused of banning books and promoting anti-American values. This is pure propaganda, and the residents of Council Rock School District deserve better. The only board member and candidates trying to politicize our kids' education are the overzealous partisans of the Together for Council Rock group. This is clearly evidenced by all the defamatory mailers and signs being paid for by big political parties who have no ties or connections to our Council Rock community and could care less about our kids as long as their partisan agenda is being promoted. I am so disgusted by the ugly false smears against the good people on this board majority who worked tirelessly on behalf of our children, day in and day out. I see the signs of a Together for Council Rock candidate that states, quote, "She believes in girls," end quote. What does that even mean? Did her political strategist think that would be a catchy phrase to pander to her political base and create even more division? My question to her as a school board candidate would be, why don't you believe in boys too? Meanwhile, a sitting majority board member is being vilified and negatively singled out by these same candidates because he actually recognized that there's a learning loss problem with all of our students since COVID, and is doing everything in his power, along with the rest of the board majority, to fix it through programs like Knights for Knowledge and STEAM. Actions will always speak louder than words, and our community needs to hold these Together for Council Rock candidates accountable for their politically loaded, divisive words, and baseless false accusations. On a more grateful note, I would like to give my heartfelt thanks to the several members of the board's current majority who were responsible for getting our kids back in the classroom during COVID, eliminating masks, and making sure there were no mandatory COVID shots. This outcome would have been much different if the current minority
Thirty seconds.
board members had been in control. Thank you for creating stability for our children and for your common sense decision-making during that dark and confusing time. And finally, many thanks to the five current majority board members for all your great accomplishments over these past years, and for your outstanding public service to our Council Rock community, and for putting our students first always. Thank you.
Next up is Cheryl Blake. Cheryl Blake. Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Blake. I have a child in the district, and I'm also a graduate of Council Rock. I live in Richborough. So I'm a community member here to voice my concern about the lies being told by Together for Council Rock during the current school board election cycle. I have seen flyers, letters, and mailers warning the community of anti-American values and book banning. None of the information on them is true about any of the sitting board members or candidates. I can only assume that if you cannot run on facts in what you bring to the board, you will go negative and never tell people who you really are. If your skills are not enough, then I ask you not to run for this volunteer position. That should be about kids and education. Speaking of volunteers, I want to thank this board for all of its time, dedication, and hard work. I've heard a claim that this board cuts budgets, staff, instructional spending, and forced out administration. However, I've also listened to many board committee meetings which are public, and the superintendent specifically was asked and informed the community several times that no staff has been cut. The recent finance committee meeting that is also public revealed that salaries have gone up because we have hired more people. Once again, there are people out there looking to mislead our community and divide us. I encourage everyone to focus on the information presented to Council Rock, presented by Council Rock, to avoid misinformation and misinterpretation by outsiders. I commend this board for creating Knights of Knowledge to begin to combat learning loss, successful launch of a STEAM program, taxes significantly lower than Act 1, and reliably at or below 2%, a turf field at South, and many renovations across the district while following a predetermined renovation schedule. Many don't understand the time and hours you all put in voluntarily, but I also see that many people don't understand how a school district budget works, how a renovation schedule works, and how board directors are involved, so I thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Liz Yaus. Good evening.
Good evening. According to Harvard's definition, a banned book is not allowed to be published, not allowed to enter a country, not allowed to exist, as in the case of book burning during Nazi Germany. A recent example of a ban was the incandescent light bulb. Companies are banned from producing them. Consumers are banned from purchasing them. That is a ban. Nothing like that is occurring here in Council Rock. According to the Merriam-Webster dictionary, the definition of a lie is to make an untrue statement with intent to deceive. Recent campaign literature, op-eds, and other social media have contained lies about book banning in Council Rock. During the May 18, 2023 school board meeting, there was a direct question of the board asking if there is a book banning happening in Council Rock. Dr. Thorwart offered to have a policy meeting to discuss the creation of book banning policy. He asked Mr. Tate, and I quote, "You were policy director before me. You didn't see any policy for banning books, did you?" His answer was no. Dr. Thorwart then asked the board if anyone is interested in banning books, and the answer from everyone was a resounding no. The fact is, there has never been any banning of books, and there will never be banning of books in Council Rock. These lies are fabricated to deceive the average voter who does not attend school board meetings, and they are intended to divide us as a community. If there is any question on book banning, let's have a candidate speak for themselves instead of making accusations without foundation or consultation. If a campaign is lying to the public, accusing a candidate of the intention of banning books, what else will they lie to you about? I don't have enough time to list all the great things that the current board has done for our students. Here are just a few. They fought hard to get our kids back into the classroom appropriately. They made sure that the COVID shots were not mandatory to return to school. They are addressing learning loss from COVID with a focus on STEAM. They created a program called Knights for Knowledge to address learning loss, which was so successful for math that the board is trying to expand it to include English and language arts. They focused on the budget, they created a five-year curriculum
Thirty seconds.
review and capital plan, and created a tax rebate for senior citizens. All of this while keeping our taxes low and real estate values high. Let's remember that the school board is not a partisan body. I like the idea of having a debate. I'm sure that the community would appreciate knowing which candidates would like to participate versus those who do not want to participate in a debate. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kristin Bresnan. Looks like from Northampton. Kristin, with a C. Sorry? Okay, thank you. Next one up is Peter, last name starts with an H. Yes. You're not speaking? Next up is Renee Kilgariff.
Don't want to be the dead horse.
Okay. That concludes the list I have in front of me. At the top of the second sheet.
I was?
Yes.
I'm not even going to take three minutes.
I'll give you 30 seconds. Good evening, Ms. King.
Wendy King, Newtown PA. I had come because I'm getting these flyers also. And I'm looking at it, and all our Democrat friends, your names are all on those flyers. And I'm reading them saying, "Mr. Tate didn't do that. Mr. Tate's not agreeing with that. I didn't hear any of you agreeing with what's on these flyers. By the way, you're gonna all, if we, if the Republicans win, or we keep the board the same, you're gonna lower our property value. Did you know that? You gotta go. You just gotta go." I just think that you need to look at these flyers. I think you guys need to make a public statement again because somebody's not listening, and tell them what's on these flyers is not correct. Dave Kennedy's page came up again with that the board, when we had the people coming in for the job interview to take over to Kristin, that you guys manipulated Stephen, that you didn't take your time, you wouldn't listen to the evidence, and I believe, Mr. Tate, you were the one who had the meeting going, who did it, who had the vote going. You did it. The board would have taken their time, they didn't even have a chance. We were all kind of shocked about this news because the candidates weren't public. We didn't know about them until we got here to the board, but somebody knew about them. So somebody leaked it. And so now they're saying, this page is saying that you guys, you know, are cheats, and you didn't give it time, and you didn't investigate it, you just pushed it through. And I'm thinking, I was here. I know what happened. I believe one of you guys even said, you want to put this off. Can we, do you want to, and Mr. Tate said, no, we're voting. You voted. Didn't get what you wanted, but you voted. So, but this was all your fault, all your fault. So your names do it too. All your, the Democrat names are on all this stuff. So they're representing you whether you said it or not, and it doesn't look good. Because all my years of being here, 30 years in Council Rock, I've never seen anything that is going on this year. It's pretty bad, embarrassing, actually.
Thank you, Mrs. King. That'll conclude public comment. You want to speak? Now you want to speak? Okay, please. Just state your name. I know who you are, but just state it for the record, Wendy, please. Thank you. Good evening, Wendy.
Just a minute, thank you very much. Yes, I'm Wendy Nowicki. I am a Council Rock parent in Newtown. Earlier, I passed. I had an entirely different focus. It didn't seem appropriate at the time, and so I passed. And I do believe that truth is important and will be seen. But really, all I really want to say right now is that I just want to thank the parents and the community members that came out and spoke, that came forward with courage to share their experiences. I thought it was very touching. I think it was very important. They shared their experiences with bullying and with trauma that they've experienced with their children, and it took a lot to stand up here and to be vulnerable, especially in an atmosphere that's really fraught with political attacks, with personal agendas, and that really only can add to the difficulty. I just hope that as a district, and as a board, and as everyone in this room could just hear that for a moment, because we need to hear those experiences. We need to hear that there are people that don't feel safe, that there are students that experience this every day, that hide in classrooms between, when they're moving from class to class, that hide during lunchtime. We need to hear that those experiences happen, and that we need to do better. And so I just, I hope that we could hear that amongst all of this circus that is happening, that we can address those concerns with the appropriate level of transparency as a district. I realize it's difficult up there. I realize that you, we can't know everything, and that, but with an appropriate level of transparency, but that we can also come together and build a better, more supportive, more inclusive, and safer environment for students to learn and thrive. We just, we have to do better by these students and not have this. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. From there, we'll go to the board comment, new business. Ms. Haverly, are you taking the PSBA part, or?
I was doing the BSBA first.
PSBA, yeah, new business. Mr. Roosevelt, are you, you and Mr. Hickey?
Yes. Mr. Hickey and I have been appointed by this board to be the delegates for PSBA elections, and I believe Mrs. Haverly has the motion. Correct. Yes, please.
I make the motion to allow the Board of Delegates of PSBA to review and make a conscious decision to vote for the proper candidates in the PSBA elections, including specifically Allison Mathis, Sabrina Becker, Karen Beth Pooley, Marcia Pietta, and Eric Meredith.
Second on that, please?
I'll read it, since it's a motion.
Please.
So moved. Second.
Second for Dr. Thorwart. Do we need the vote on?
Yes.
Okay. Unless there's a consent. Is there any objection to these individuals that are, I believe, running unopposed?
Correct. These individuals- Correct. These individuals are running unopposed.
Any comment from the board? Any objections from the board? I'm hearing none. I'll ask the secretary to mark them unanimous and send it off to PSBA. From there, we'll move to new board business. Is there any new business of the board?
Yeah, I do have some business to discuss. Back in the spring during the primary, Dr. Thorwart had described an experience where he went around to different polls and was confronted by voters. And the voters were asking about book bans. Why is Council Rock banning books? Some were happy, some were upset. Who knows? And Dr. Thorwart described this experience to us, and he was confused as far as where did this come from. Well, we now know where it came from, and apparently there were flyers that went out around the primary, which confused the community. We've heard from the community prior about not bringing in politics to this board. We heard community members tonight discussing this politics and this confusing. So we also had a public comment that recited the exchange between Dr. Thorwart and Mr. Tate. So it's difficult to kind of go back through this. Mr. Tate's in a unique position where he both understands all of us as well as running. And being a candidate for this board is a volunteer position. We spent a lot of time on it. And we are, all the candidates, both from both sides in this largely non-political structure, are supposed to focus on the kids, which is what we're doing. We've got Dr. Sanco that created a new model, or a motto, of students first. So we've heard from candidates over the past months coming up and saying how they don't want politics to come in, and yet it keeps coming in. So I'm concerned, because this is a public school district. We have a duty to educate the public's community, and that's what we're doing, regardless of their ability, whether it's high or low, regardless of where they come from. This is something that all of us are looking to do, is educate the kids. And it's difficult, and it's distressing when we're distracted from that mission with politics. So it's... A lot of these things have been pointed out. It's hard to sort of capture the emotion of many of the brave people that have come up, both tonight and previously, to describe their positions and their experiences. So I'm concerned, because a lot of it is baseless. It's factually inaccurate. It distresses this community. It confuses this community. It does a disservice to this board. It does a disservice to this district, and it does a disservice to the kids that attend this school. And I'd like to get an end to it. I do not want to see, and I've mentioned this to many of my colleagues here, I don't want to see candidates with their pictures on school property. I don't want to see politics rally missions in our facilities, because this is dividing us instead of bringing us together. So in light of a lot of these comments, Mr. Tate, you did confirm as prior chair for the Policy Committee, and Dr. Thorwart has confirmed as current chair of this committee, that we do not have a book ban. We don't have a policy for book ban. So I ask each of you if you would repeat that, just as it were, to come right from your mouths, unless I'm incorrect.
I'll start. I said before, and I'll say again, people that ban books are rarely the good guys. I mean it, and I mean it wholeheartedly. You can split hairs somewhere and decide if describing sex scenes belongs in a elementary school library or a middle school library. I offered to have that discussion. I'm still offering to have that discussion. I'd love to have everybody on record for where they stand with that. But in the meantime, banning books, whoever does that, they're rarely the good guys. I'd say never at all. Dr. Sanco, I called you earlier just to confirm this. There are no book challenges. There's nothing out there. It's radio silent, if I'm not mistaken, on all of this.
We do not currently have any book challenges.
Is that enough?
Thank you, Dr. Thorwart. Mr. Tate, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'm not going to get into a political debate during a board meeting. I don't think it's proper or appropriate. You want to talk about a policy change or some new policy? I'm happy to have that discussion. But I don't think a political debate is appropriate during a board meeting, and that's all I'll have to say. Thank you.
I agree. We shouldn't have political debates on this board. I'm not intending to bring that. I don't believe I am bringing that. I'm bringing it attention because this board is comprised of nine people with administration that spend a lot of time and have worked together for a long time. I think in some cases, we've worked with each other for months, and in other cases, we've worked with each others for years. And in several cases, some of you have been working with each other for nearly a decade. And the community sees that, and the community sees flyers as well and gets embroiled in this. So the debate has been brought to this boardroom. I don't want to continue it. I'm trying to end it. But I think it needs to end all around. Mr. Funk and Ms. Crawford, do we house all books that are printed? All books that are printed in current circulation in the United States, do we have room for them in our libraries?
No, we do not.
Does the collection of books change? Does our collection remain the same as it did five years, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 50 years ago, or has it changed?
It continues to change.
So are the books that we don't have, are they banned?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Sanco, do you concur with this?
I concur.
Thank you. I... Sorry. I, you know, this is difficult, because we do have a diverse community. We have a diversity on this board, and that's good. We should have difference of opinions. And that's the reason why we deliberate. We deliberate in committee meetings. We deliberate around this table. We deliberate only in these areas per sunshine laws. And it's because of this deliberation that we express different points of views. We recognize that our students and the families of our students also have different point of views, and all of them should be valued, and all of them should be heard. And that's what makes this community strong. And I think that that's what we need to get back to, is to recognize the focus should be on education, the focus should be on the students, instead of baseless and factually inaccurate statements and actions by few on both sides, effectively, that do nothing but divide this community, create confusion, and raise concern. So I like the fact that we have people, so many people, that are engaged in school board business, and that we have so many candidates that come forward to come up here and to volunteer and to give back to help that mission. And I thank the board members around the table that continue to do that. And in some cases, it makes it very difficult. We've heard a lot of emotional things throughout this evening and other evenings. And it's because of that in a lot of cases, we need to hear that, because we're not involved in the intimate day-to-day business. We're here to interface with the community and the administration as representatives of our areas to make sure that education of our kids is taking place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. Anybody else? New business. Mr. Hidalgo, please.
Sure. Thank you. I was just going to respond to Mr. Tate's comment that you don't want to talk about politics at the board diocese. And you were policy chair, and there was this question about, you know, what happened under your tenure as policy chair. And I'm just going to wonder if there is a policy for talking about politics at the diocese. I mean, I actually called Mr. Cox about this earlier, saying, is there some type of policy or ethical line where we draw and then to talk about politics? You know, if you're in a campaign, it's been filled with this room tonight. It's been really crazy. And I think people who've been here for 30 years have seen that have never seen anything like this before. And, you know, I'll be happy... We'll all be happy when November 7th is gone. But my question is, is a book a policy on books and the procedures and the perceived procedures political, that we can't speak about it? That's my question. Is it political to ask the question? How is it political? It's a policy on books for children. And all they asked is a simple question, was whether or not we have a policy on banning. I think that was the question, and your answer was, "I'm not going to talk about politics." And I agree, it's apolitical. But I just don't think that, you know, you can say it. It's okay. We don't have a policy on banned books. And I appreciate Mr. Tate. You and I don't always agree, but he's a good person. You know, I think everybody up here is a good person. And I am surprised that we get people coming down, out of town, spending money, attacking non-paying volunteers that are doing this out of the goodness of their heart, honest to God. And there's the lady that gave you the middle finger the one time. She's still talking. Isn't that great? So, you know, you get a lot of beauty. You get a lot of beauty up here. And I'll say this. I am very, very, very proud of our community, okay? I'm not perfect. None of us are perfect. We're doing the best that we can. And we do it because we care about the children. I think I've always kept that clear, that what I do is for the children. I have three of them, all different spans and abils and abilities. And we're all blessed to be here. I do like the idea that our one friend talked about, open the public meeting with a prayer. Now, that's something we're all losing. That's something that's lost amongst all of us. You talk about student wellness. You talk about helping kids. You turn your back on one of the greatest therapists there ever was in mankind, and that was a creator that you can believe in or not in many different ways. God is good. It's people that are evil, okay, that take the wrong path. So I'll say that, because you know what? I think we've turned our back on it, and I think it's a shame, and I think we shouldn't. And there's a way to do it without separating church and state. I'm not, you know, I understand there's rules, and I'll be glad to have that debate with you guys, because you don't ban something like religion because you're trying to separate church and state. We're not being run by the church. We're being run by the public, and we should have freedom, freedom of speech, freedom of religion. Don't ever forget that. That's what our country was founded on. And we got to get back to the basics. We can all agree that everybody wants our kids to have a great education. Everybody wants our kids to feel welcome and safe in school. Everybody wants our school board to spend our dollars wisely. And everybody wants us to do right by our teachers and support staff that make a positive difference every day in our school district. I want to thank Dr. Sanco for the amazing job that he's done over the 30-some years at this school district. I didn't know Mark Klein, but he reminds me of a Mark Klein, a legend in our school district. Nobody should talk bad of this man, because I saw him the first day I ever came, before I was even on the school board. This man was at every after-school event. I'd see him all over the time. He's in the school when I'd be visiting schools, even when he was a principal and I was new to this school district, and I had an autistic support son at Holland Elementary School. This man pulled up his chair backwards and sat with the whole group of this autistic support program in Holland Library and said, "You know what, guys? This stinks, but we... I mean, I'm here to support you." He was the principal of that school, telling us that we were going to have to... Well, we were moving actually from Richborough to Holland, and he was there to welcome us. And let me tell you, he was a warm, warm welcome. It was hard to leave Richborough, because those students were so, so supportive of the autistic support program there. And then we went to Holland. Then my kid went to... Then the same child went to Richborough Middle for the last year, and then he went to Holland Middle School for the second year. And then instead of sending him up to Council Rock North, it was through some consultation with Dr. Sanco at the time, when he had a life skills program at the middle school at Holland, where his sister, my son's sister went, Emily, that he would have that support program if he was able to switch to life skills. So my autistic son, it was better for us that we would put him in that track instead of sending him to the north, where he wouldn't know anybody and be further away. The school district has been supportive, okay? And I want to say thank you to Chuck Lambert. And I cried when Chuck Lambert retired. And I'm very hopeful for Anthony Devlin here, that he's going to continue to carry the torch. I know good people when I see them. I know lies when I see them. And I'm going to do my best here as a school board director to find what makes us our similarities, because we're more alike than we are different. So focus on what makes us...
I'm so sorry.
It's coming. It's coming. You're talking about Mr. Tate?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I like to ramble, but... All right, so, so hold on.
Joe, are you done?
I think so.
Joe, are you done?
I think so. Am I done?
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, just to kind of bring this back full circle, I guess, to where it originally started. I don't believe that Mr. Roosevelt was trying to single you out politically. He had asked a general question as to the policy of the district as it relates to book banning, and whether or not we either do or do not ban books. Your answer on that is a simple yes or no, or I don't know. You can give your opinion, whatever. I know I've been on the record about where I stand in relation to books here, and I would be glad to speak about it to anyone at some point, but I'm not going to do it now after Joe's speech. But I think just to bring it full circle, you were just asked a question, do we ban books in the district? Not a political question, just a policy question as it relates to book banning. And he was just asking, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Roosevelt, just a simple yes, no, or I don't know.
This has turned into a political debate. I don't think it's...
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Mr. Tate, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm not trying to bring in a debate. I was actually trying to demonstrate that we know each other, that we've worked with each other as both candidates as well as board members, and trying to get you to restate something, to confirm for the public. That's all. That's all I was trying to do.
Okay. Anybody else?
Not now.
Is there anybody else from the board?
Yes.
Tate. Folks.
You want to end it?
Mr. Salomon.
I don't like Salomon.
Excuse me?
I'm speaking.
Is there anybody else from the board who would like to speak about new business? Anybody else for old business from the board?
Did I speak too long? Then I apologize, okay?
I don't time you.
All I was trying to say is that Dr. Sanco is awesome, okay?
I was blind there. I remember it.
Anybody else? Have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you. Thank you.